Okay, good evening, everyone. Want to thank you for attending tonight's meeting. It's currently 5:03. Please rise as Deputy City Secretary Liz Carraway leads us in the pledge, I'm sorry, in the invocation, followed by the pledge, which will be led by the City Secretary Janet Llewellyn.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for your continued grace. I give thanks given to you always and especially during this Easter season. I pray for and lift up our city leadership for your blessing and gracious intervention. Thank you that they each choose to serve our city. I pray for a continual renewal of their energy so they can address the needs of our community. May they engage with the citizens to apply strategies to address the collective needs of Temple in order to move forward in positive endeavors. Give them capable assistance through staff and administration who also serve our city. May each one contribute through unity and purpose so that excellent strategies and plans may be implemented. Thank you too for the businesses, industries, hospitals, churches, organizations, families, and individuals who make up our city. Together, may they all work to please you and to benefit all those who live and work in and around Temple. And lastly, as the spectacular solar eclipse gets closer, also pray for our citizens and out-of-town visitors to our area. May they be granted traveling mercies. Also lift up and pray for our first responders, police officers, firefighters, medics, emergency personnel, parks and rec, public works, and transform temple crews, as well as all others who will be working tirelessly to ensure the safety and well-being of everyone in our city during this event. In your gracious name, I pray. Amen.
Thank you, ladies. The next item is public comments. Citizens who desire to address the council in any matter may do so. We ask that you step to the podium and state your name for the record. Please understand that no discussion or final action will be taken. And we also ask that you keep your comments to about three minutes and you can see the, on the monitors, you'll be able to see the timer. So first, we have Michael McCloskey.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Michael McCloskey and I'm Field Director for Congressman John Carter. I just wanted to introduce myself and let you know that the Carter team is here to support the City of Temple in any way that we can, and please reach out to us. There is a card left at each of your places for my contact information, and we just want to let you know that any way we can support you, we're here to do that. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McCloskey. Be sure and pass on our regards, Congressman Carter, all the good work that he does on behalf of the city. Next is Amy Dixon.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Amy Dixon. I am here in representation of the Human Animal Support Coalition. I'm just here to introduce the coalition to the community. The vision of the Human Animal Support Coalition is a caring community that actively shares responsibility for people and their pets through long-term sustainable programs, policies, education, and dedicated involvement. The mission of the coalition is to bring the community together in a structured way to take collective accountability for public safety, programs to help our underserved neighbors care for and keep their pets, and animal life-saving at our local shelters. With nearly, so why, why was this coalition formed? Nearly 98% of all pet owners consider their pets to be family, yet in Temple alone, there, I estimate about 10,000 pets are living in poverty. So where these, where their owners struggle, the pets struggle as well. Numerous organizations exist in our community to serve people, but there's a gap in serving pets that live with those owners who are struggling. So the goals of the coalition are to help our income-challenged and underserved neighbors care for and keep their pets, to increase life-saving at our local animal shelters, and to educate and develop awareness through a judgment-free legacy for the future. So what's next? City of Temple and the community, working together, we can help form programs to assist pet owners with food and supplies, provide affordable and accessible vet care, and keep community or unowned cats out of shelters and empower our neighbors to rehome them pets, rehome their pets themselves, instead of taking pets to shelters where they are subject to extreme stress, exposure to disease, and potential euthanasia. Proactive community pet-related programs keep pets in the loving homes that they already have. They demonstrate fair treatment to all citizens, and they create a more appealing city brand. They're often less costly to taxpayers than traditional reactive measures like animal sheltering. And then, these are the pets so far in our city this year. Just some of the pets that have lost their lives, to, lost their lives in the animal shelter.
Thank you. Okay, next is a discussion regarding Better Cities for Pets from Michelle Chapman.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmember. My name is Michelle and I'm the resident of Temple, Texas. I'm here to request that the Temple participate in the Better Cities for Pets, a Mars Pet Care Program. Becoming a better city for pets, certify the city, shows residents and visitors that our City of Temple is taking steps to welcome pets and help keep people and pets together. There's no cost to apply from the city. The only requirement is a city assessment to be filled out in the following three areas. Baseline information about our city and its pet-friendly features and programs. Key traits from the Better Cities for Pets models, which include shelters, home, parks, businesses, and help pets and people and responsible pet ownership. Our pet focus priority for the year, and that could be decided what we'd like to do on that. After this assessment has been returned to the Mars Pet Care, they will review the information and produce a report on our strengths and opportunities and being a pet-friendly city. I would like to give you some cities in Texas out of the 13 that have been certified as Better Cities for Pets. Just to kind of give you an idea, I'm not going to rattle off 13 cities, but the major ones are Dallas, Fort Worth, Arlington, Austin, San Marcos, Houston, and Mission. No city in central Texas has been certified, so let's us be the first ones. Our City of Temple should celebrate our community that recognizes the importance of pets and wants to make progress towards being more pet-friendly. Pets help make cities happier, healthier, places to live. When you make pets part of our city planning and policy, you can make life better for everyone. This program is designed to help and provide grants up to $20,000 to help a city of Temple on future projects if awarded. I would like to be the designated partner with the approval of the Temple Mayor to go forward on this assessment. Remember, pets can't speak for themselves.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to special recognitions, we have a couple of them tonight. First, I would like to recognize the Temple Public Library and National Library Week. Do you want to have your folks come up?
Not a real recognition if we don't have a proclamation. All right, so if I may, this proclamation reads, "Whereas libraries offer the opportunity for everyone to connect with others, learn new skills, and to pursue their passions, no matter where they are on life's journey. And whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions, striving to ensure equitable access to information and services for all members of the community, regardless of their race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. And whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, developing and expanding collections, program, and services that are as diverse as the populations they serve. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advanced understanding, civil engagement, and shared community goals. And whereas libraries play a pivotal role in economic development by providing resources and support for job seekers, entrepreneurs, and small businesses, thus contributing to the local prosperity and growth. Whereas libraries make choices that are good for the environment and make, and make sense economically, creating thriving communities for a better tomorrow. And whereas libraries are treasured institutions that preserve our collective heritage and knowledge, safeguarding both physical and digital resources for present and future generations. And whereas libraries are an essential public good and fundamental institutions in democratic societies, working to improve society, protect the right to education and literacy, and to promote the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore I, Timothy A. Davis, Mayor of the City of Temple, do hereby proclaim National Library Week to be April 7th through 13th, 2024. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit their library and celebrate the adventures and opportunities they unlock for us every day. Ready, set, library. In testimony whereof, I witness my hand on the sill of the City of Temple, Texas, on this fourth day of April, 2024. So, if you would, tell us a little bit about Library Week. Tell us about your, your folks. Just get us caught up.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for participating in this recognition. The group that we've got in front of you today is a smattering of the different divisions that we have within the library, the behind-the-scenes team with our technical services, providers that do our acquisitions and our cataloging, our circulation team, our adult services team, our youth services team, our administrative team. These are folks who every day come in and they deal with the public, they help the public, they're invested in the future of this community at the face-to-face level. So we're not behind glass, we're not behind a screen. We're there helping the members of our community, making a difference in their lives, whether it be, like we mentioned, economic prosperity, helping people get jobs, helping people with their resumes, or sometimes it's just that heart-to-heart, and it's just being there for people who need it. So I would like to say thank you to my team for all that they do, and let's get ready for National Library Week next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, Council, get regular reports from different departments, obviously the library being one of those. And it's amazing how much the use of the library has gone up the last few years, especially around COVID. That is, you know, not, not all of us spend a lot of time. Oh, it makes me sound like I can't read. Not all of us go to the library, but those people that do really see it as a, as a true lifeline and as a real contributor to their, a real contributor to their life. So thank you, Ms. Alvarez, for all the work that you guys do and your continued dedication to the residents. It's very nice. Next, we will have a recognition of April 2024 as Distracted Driver Awareness Month. Mr. Deckman?
Okay. Good evening. This, um, this proclamation reads, "Whereas the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration has declared the month of April 2024 as National Distracted Driving Awareness Month. And whereas distracted driving is an activity that diverts attention from driving, including talking or texting on your phone, eating or drinking, talking to people in your vehicle, using a navigation system, or adjusting in-vehicle systems like air conditioning or entertainment. Whereas any activity that takes even part of your attention away from the task of operating the automobile can increase your risk of crashing, causing harm to another human being. And whereas nationwide, more than 2,000 people have been killed due to distracted drivers since 2017, and the number of deaths increased by 10% in 2022. Whereas during 2023, 446 distracted driving crashes were reported in Temple, resulting in 72 injuries and one death. Since September 1st, 2017, it has been illegal to read, write, or send a text while driving in Texas with fines up to $200 for violating. Whereas the City of Temple is reminded everyone, is reminding everyone to make a smart choice to give driving their unidentified, their undivided attention. We urge you to consider your own safety and that of others every time you get behind the wheel. Now therefore I, Timothy A. Davis, Mayor of the City of Temple, Texas, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as National Distracted Driving Awareness Month, and is committing, and is committed to ending all traffic-related deaths in the City of Temple. In testimony whereof, I witness my hand on the sill of the City of Temple, Texas, on this fourth day of April, 2024."
Thank you. So that, and some comments you have to make? So when we put this together, someone asked me, what's the penalty? Were we on? Okay. Someone asked me, what's the penalty if you get caught using your phone while you're driving? And that's the wrong question. There are penalties. The question is, who in this room, by show of hands, is responsible for keeping everyone on the roads safe? Every hand should go up, right? It's a shared responsibility. There are penalties if you do the wrong thing. This is not about penalizing anyone. This is about encouraging you to make good choices, to do the right thing. The fatality that the mayor mentioned that was in the report was a 17-year-old child. That life ended way sooner than it should have, and distracted driving was listed as a factor contributing to that crash. So remember that you raised your hand tonight. Next time you get in the car and you're attempting to drop the phone or eat that burger while you're driving home because you're in a rush. So just, all I'm asking is make good choices. Thank you. Well, this is about distracted dri, driving, but the last day that there was not a fatality on Texas roads due to driving, operating a vehicle was November 7th, 20 20, 2001, November 7th, 2001. So 23 years. Every day, at least one person has been killed on the roads in Texas. That's, that's at least 7,000 people. So something to think about. Mr. Deckman, thank you for that. Moving on to the consent agenda. All items under this section are considered to be routine by the City Council and may be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by the council, any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of that council member and will be considered separately. Council, during our workshop earlier today, we went through the, the agenda and nothing was requested to be pulled. Is that still the case? All right. Then, Council, at this time, I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda, which is items 6A through 6R.
We approve the consent agenda as presented, items 6A through 6R.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Councilmember Pilkington. We have a second by Councilmember Long. Council, please cast your vote. The consent agenda passes five votes to zero. Moving on to the next item, which is item number seven, is the first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance approving a rezoning request from two family-dwelling to neighborhood services on .5165 plus or minus acres. Legally described as Lot 2, Block D, Bellevue Edition subdivision, addressed as 1911 West Avenue H. Mr. Chandler?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. And so the applicant is the Willow School, and so they're proposing to convert a church into a Montessori school. And so the top right-hand corner, you can see where that's located on South 39th Street and West Avenue H. And so the request is to rezone from two-family to neighborhood service. And in addition to Montessori school, it would include some early childhood development, childcare center, et cetera. And so they have a survey that is, this is not a planned development rezoning, but just to show kind of the concept of what is there. And so you can see the, the church building footprint, some accessory structures, sufficient parking. There's a, already a sidewalk on West Avenue H. And here you can see the church, they, they have done some renovation already, which they're certainly, their rezoning is not dependent on their ability to be able to renovate. So they've already started that process. You can see there's actually a portable building that's been there a, a long time, which can also supplement their, their educational programming. And to the north, along Avenue H, you can see it's a, you know, mix of residential, but mostly offices that have converted homes into office space. To the south is still consistently single-family residential, though. As is to the west. And to the east, you can see still service and office and neighborhood service-type retail uses. And so neighborhood service, of course, allows the private school, and you can see immediately to the east, it's already a zone neighborhood service. And the future development plan as part of the 2020 Conference of Plan identifies this area as urban residential, future development category. But it also includes, it allows for public recreational uses and, and neighborhood-serving retail. Avenue H is a major arterial, and once again, sidewalks would be required upon redevelopment, but there's already a sidewalk there, so, which is going to be helpful for getting neighborhood kids to and from school. And so just a, a quick overview, just a reminder, neighborhood services include private schools, includes hair salons, and are truly uses that support neighborhood. And so 21 notices were sent to property owners within 200 feet. Two have been returned in agreement, actually three, looking at the map there. And the newspaper printed notice on March 7th, and staff recommends approval. And at the March 18th PNZ meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission voted six to zero to approve per staff recommendation. And Shelby Smith is the, our case manager. This is her first zoning case. She's done a fantastic job and just kind of pulling the car into the driveway. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler. Council, anything for Brian? All right. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. We ask you to step to the podium and state your name for the record.
I should mention the applicants are here as well, in case they had anything to say. They've, they've done a great job.
Hi, Mayor and City Council. My name is Taylor Jackson, and, thank you. Sorry, short person over here. I will be the director of the school. My co-owner over there will also be joining me. We will both be administrators of the school. And we are a Montessori school, so you know, we believe in building up the community. Montessori is all about developing the whole child. So we walked into this church and just fell in love. We've been looking for two years for a place, and we actually just finished renovations. We should be getting our certificate of occupancy here soon. So we did put a lot of money into preserving the 1950s building, but also updating it to make sure it's safe for children. So we're excited. We have all of our staff ready to go. We have tentative enrollment, obviously, per rezoning and childcare licensing. About 50 children ready to go. And we've met most of our neighbors, and they're very excited about this project of ours, and we're really grateful for the City of Temple. So thank you for having us.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone on the virtual platform? All right. There's just no other comments, and I'll close this public hearing. And Council, through no further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion here, too.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. We have a second by Councilmember Long. Council, please cast your vote. Item seven passes five votes to zero. Congratulations. Next item is the first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance approving a rezoning request from Ag to Planned Development Single Family Dwelling One with a development site plan on 92.65 plus or minus acres, known as Bell County Appraisal District Identification Numbers 118191, 118194, 524654, 46804, 46805. Generally located east of the existing terminus of Jupiter Drive, commencing on the west side of South Kegley Road, approximately 2,500 feet south of its intersection with West Adams, addressed as 990 South Kegley Road and 6224 Jupiter Drive. Mr. Chandler?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. And so a little bit of background, this request, the 92.65 acres is actually a reduced request from what went to planning and zoning previously, which you can see on the bottom left-hand corner is what was requested before for 155 acres. So a significant reduction of acreage, just a, a plain, Planned Development Single Family One request compared to a request that included single-family two, townhomes, multifamily, and general retail previously, and then, of course, the, the shrunken acreage. And as a result of the previous requests, Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation for disapproval, the applicant went back, revisited what they could do, met with staff, met with Councilmember Pilkington, the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and key stakeholders to talk about, honestly, what, what did the community want to see? The input was overwhelmingly larger lot, single-family residential, which is what they've come back with. And so Exhibit A, the site plan, per the PD, is the exhibit in the top right-hand corner. Actually, well, there, Exhibit A is the next slide after this. I'll show you what that looks like. But still getting oriented in terms of, you can see the yellow boundary of what that 155 acres included before. And so here are images of the property and neighboring properties, the top left-hand corner, and we'll work our way clockwise. Top left-hand corner is looking south along Uh, top left hand corner is looking south along Kegley. And then top right hand corner facing northeast along Kegley. And then facing east along Jupiter Drive, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. I think most of us are pretty familiar with Jupiter Drive. It is, as the picture suggests, a very narrow, um, road that is in disrepair. Uh, and then facing north along Blue Stem Boulevard, those, a, a previous duplex, uh, project. And so here is Exhibit A. And this is rotated ninety degrees. So Kegley is at the bottom there, but you can see all, all of it is yellow for single family one. Uh, and then you can see Pepper Creek Trail and the Trails Master Plan Alignment. So, uh, once developed, the Pepper Creek, uh, Trail System would also be extended as part of this development. And then we have other dashed lines, uh, for the thoroughfare plan that we'll go into a little more detail on. Okay, so starting, and now we've got the exhibit north, south oriented. And so we have east, west collectors, the dashed yellow lines, two of them that would be developed as part of this project. And so you can see number one and, uh, and number two. So number one on the southern end near that duplex development Blue Stem, south of the Pepper Creek Trail, number two is further up Kegley. And then number three is a, a north, south collector that would also be responsible for, by the developer for building that at the time of development of this single family project if approved. Uh, also, uh, of course, Kegley widening, that is something that neighbors have brought up. Planning and Zoning Commission discussed it at great length as well. Uh, as, as you all know, that contract has been approved to finish Kegley all the way down to Midway, and that's an estimated, um, timeframe of about two years. Uh, and so if this, if this is approved, then the coordination of, uh, going vertical with new homes, uh, may line up very well based on the proposed timelines. Looking at the, uh, specific conditions related to the, the three uh, community collectors that we discussed, those would include sixty-six feet of right of way, uh, sidewalks on both sides or a shared use path. You know, for bikes and pedestrians, you know, ten feet, so either two foot, two, five foot sidewalks or shared use path, depending on what makes sense at the time and, uh, addressed at the plating stage. Also a system of greenbelt trails, uh, and once again, Pepper Creek Trail Extension would be part of that. So looking at the mobility and, uh, Jason Deckman is here in case I stumble and you have additional information, which, uh, we would like some, but I'll, I'll take a stab at it. So, uh, of course, there are concerns about not only what this project might generate in terms of traffic, but there are other projects that are either under construction or have been rezoned, uh, that other multifamily townhomes that we wanted to account for as well. And so Kegley, of course, um, it's two lanes with a center turn lane, and there are lots of reasons why that is not going to be a four lane, uh, project. So it, it is two with a, a center turn lane, uh, in minor arterial, uh, can accommodate estimated twelve thousand to twenty-four thousand daily trips. So how many is this project going to generate? Well, according to the Institute of Transportation Engineers, uh, single family homes would generate approximately nine trips, nine daily trips for twenty-eight hundred and twenty-nine for the three hundred single family homes proposed as part of this development. As I mentioned, to the north along Kegley and Adams, uh, there are other projects under construction, including the Village at Pepper Creek Trail. Uh, that's roughly two hundred, um, multifamily just north of that, but what is accurate is the fourteen hundred trips that would be generated once that project is completed. Of course, not all of those would be on Kegley, some on Adams, so that we don't require traffic impact analysis, which would give breakdown of how many of those trips would be expected to go on to Kegley, how many would be expected to go on Adams. So with our ability, we just look at, okay, assuming everything goes on Kegley, how many, how many trips can a, a three lane arterial, uh, accommodate? How many trips are being generated? And so, um, roughly three thousand for this project, fourteen hundred for Village of Pepper Creek, and then approximately twelve hundred and sixty trips generated by the Townhome Project between the two. Uh, looking at the comprehensive plan, uh, this area is identified as residential and neighborhood service, and certainly this single family detached, um, midsize lot project is compliant. Looking at water and sewer uh, along Kegley, you have, um, twelve inch water line and, uh, and then wastewater, twenty-four inch and fifteen inch. Uh, you could see heading up a- along the Pepper Creek Trail, or excuse me, the Pepper Creek itself. And so just overall, looking at compliance with the comprehensive plan, checks all the boxes for staff and its analysis. Twenty-nine notices were sent out to property owners within two hundred feet. Uh, three were returned in agreement. And, uh, zero responses in disagreement. However, uh, we did, we, we received one outside of the notification area, and we also did receive an email in disagreement, and those are reflected there with the, the D's. Um, March seventh is the date where the newspaper posted this item. And at the March eighteenth meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission voted six to zero to approve per staff recommendation, which includes the following conditions. And this is not the exhaustive list. I could go to the exhaustive list. It's a lot on a slide, but these are key, a key ones that, uh, Mr. Deckman has highlighted and that, uh, P N Z also reviewed, but of course, the full list is in your packet. The key, key ones being that, you know, one through three in that exhaustive list is for the base zoning, the single family one with Exhibit A as a binding site plan, including the, uh, the road standards and the road alignment that we have previously looked at. Preliminary plat would be required. Uh, gated emergency access point to Jupiter Drive. If you remember, looking at that photo, Jupiter is not adequate to handle, uh, really any additional traffic. However, as an emergency access point with a clip to enter gate, if needed, that could provide access for emergency vehicles and only emergency vehicles. Uh, number seven through eight deals with the collectors that we had talked about and the minimum of sixty-six feet of right of way. Uh, prohibiting driveways, residential driveways along those collectors, that's important to, to point out. And that those three must, must all be built and interconnect to provide choices. So that's, you know, so you couldn't just have the two east, west collectors without the north, south. It needs to be able to provide the choices that, uh, that are intended, uh, to be provided. The collectors would also have the sidewalks as discussed or a side use path, you know, shared use path or side path, you know, for, uh, multimodal access, maximum three hundred dwellings with the two improved entrances, so widened. Uh, third improved entrance would be triggered if they were to exceed three hundred dwelling units. Uh, trails to be constructed by the developer along the Pepper Creek Trail. And then lastly, significant deviations from the plan would require a return to planning and zoning and to you all at City Council. That's all that I have. Happy to answer any questions. Mr. Deckman is too.
Thank you. Counsel, anything for Mr. Chandler or Mr. Deckman?
I have a question. Um, Brian, the collectors must be built. There are three of them, correct?
Yes, ma'am. And that is one of the conditions.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. That, that is one of the conditions to
Right.
to ensure that, uh, all three of those are built, you know, so, so the entrances on Kegley, you know, that, that gives them the ability to widen, to give them a one fifty homes with one widened entrance on Kegley. Second widened entrance gives them the ability to get to three hundred dwelling units. But P N Z wisely also wanted to ensure that that north, south collector connects the two, uh, so that you have additional choices.
Again, I think you said they, the developer is building those collect, those three collectors?
Yes, ma'am.
And the developer presently owns the land to build them on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Good question.
All three of those will be, will be built, um, initially, or the first one fifty only requires, uh, the one. And then whenever they go to one fifty-one, it's going to require the second.
So what, what is, what is required would be one fifty, you know, it, they cannot exceed one fifty.
Right.
Um, and so by the time they go above one fifty, then it all, all three would have to be built, but they, they could build up to one fifty with just one.
Yeah, got it.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And if I'm looking at this straight, this does not connect to Wildflower Lane.
Correct.
Right, so there would be
That, that is correct. There's a, there is a jog in there and that, and that has actually, there's been a lot of discussion about that alignment, yeah, really over the last year since the applicant initially talked to us about different concepts and, um, having that offset was desirable to not, well, to not make it as easy, uh, to get to Wildflower.
Brian, in one of the early slides you had, um, uh, there was a, a point at the bottom of the slide about right of way must be acquired. Am I?
Hmm, good.
Uh,
Jason, you know the slide number?
I'm sorry, it, um.
You can tell me when to stop.
It was early, early on.
There was one that said the future connections.
That's probably what it was. You, it was going a little quickly and I got distracted.
It may have been.
Wait, future expansion, multiple improved connections and re, no, there was something about right of way must be, right of ways must be acquired. Maybe I'm, I'm wrong. If, if this is not
Maybe you may have caught the right of way that's required for the collectors is going to be required to be sixty-six feet.
Okay, and the right of way, that, um, that will be the developer's cost and efforts to acquire those right of ways.
They, so this is property that they own. So what they own is they develop.
Okay, so they can do the right of ways. Okay, that's not an issue there. Sorry.
Good question.
Brian or Jason, would it be accurate to say though, that there are some future connections that are required to be accommodated, but not built at this time, um, that would connect to areas that are not under the control or ownership of the, of the applicant?
Yes, so
Back to Adams.
It, yes, there, there would be a connection required, you know, per code to, you know, Sundance, which of course, that, that neighborhood has stubbed out. Now that, that is not one that would be a primary access point, but it is an access point. So taking all of these access points into totality, that becomes just a, you know, a, not a, um, a, a heavily used one, but an option. There are other opportunities that, uh, could happen at Blue Stem. And so you know, the, the duplexes down in the uh, southern part that you can see next to the proposed development. Blue Stem was built to collector standards, at fifty-five feet, you know, the lower end. But the owner of the duplexes still owns that lot. And if the developer were to be able to acquire that lot, making a connection there would make a lot of sense as well, but that, we can't make that happen. So at all the access points that we're showing, we can enforce and would, um, would, would meet the three hundred, uh, dwelling unit requirements.
So if the Blue Stem connect, um, lot could not be acquired and the other one you just alluded to could not be acquired, it's still meeting all the requirements.
It, it still does, and the, the one along Sundance or near Sundance, you could see Sundance requiring a future, uh, collector. You could see a, a stub in pink, but that is something that with future development, work towards making that connection as well. Um, also, and I think Brian was probably alluding to Hogan Road, that in the future, this would provide an opportunity to, uh, to build a, a section of Hogan Road that connects to Kegley.
And that would be theoretically somebody else.
Could be, but would not be required as part of
Unless this developer were able to acquire that land also.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Can I add one more thing? Kind of in the same vein? Switch between a couple of slides here. So the, where you see the second connector that leads to the top, that's going to eventually, and that's off of the thoroughfare plan, to connect over to Old Wake Hill.
Right.
Thank you. Um, so that is shown on the thoroughfare plan. It's not currently on the property they own. It was on the previous package. So they've kept that alignment on the exhibit to show that there's a possibility when that other property comes in, that they're going to have the connection. As Brian mentioned in the presentation, it's about giving the traffic choices to not bottleneck them onto one road or the other.
Right.
So this is the, this is the first step in implementing the thoroughfare plan in this part of Temple.
And nothing is contingent upon land they do not own presently.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
That was my worry. Thank you.
Um, what's the trigger for the fourth entrance as far as number of lots?
Once they go over three hundred lots, or then they're going to have to, they're, the applicant would have to find a different connection.
They would have to acquire something to put.
Some kind of deal. Yeah, we're not telling them what kind of deal they have to make.
Oh, no, 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 no. I didn't mean that at all. Just they would have to acquire something.
That's correct.
Got it.
Anything else? I'd have made it subject to a public hearing. Um, anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. We ask you to step to the podium and state your name uh, or raise your hand on the virtual platform. Have a few folks in here, anybody wanting to speak? Yes, sir, absolutely.
My name is Kenneth McLaughlin. I live at forty-four, ten Sunflower Lane. So obviously this interests me quite a bit. Uh, I, I think we all understand development. But we're looking for some controlled development too. The exit points from that new development aren't directly across from Sunflower and Wildflower. We see that, but they're awfully close. And if you, if you live in that new development, guess where you're going to go? If you want to get to Thirty-first Street, to Hospital or anywhere else, or the roundabout, you're going to come through Wildflower. Wildflower was not built to accept that kind of traffic. It just wasn't. And if I may, and I understand, but if I may, let me tell you something. There are no sidewalks in Wildflower or that development. Between mailboxes, thirty toad feet, that's all. Thirty feet for any hog traffic. And they're going to be going through there all the time. And I got this from the golf course community. There are three golf court cart paths that intersect with and cross Sunflower Lane. Each of those crossings is subject to one hundred golf cart crossings and forty to fifty crossings by Wildflower Golf Course Maintenance Personnel Equipment every day. That's every day they're going to be going across. Okay? The golf cart path that intersects with and crosses Wildflower Lane is subject to two hundred golf cart crossings and forty to fifty crossings by Wildflower Golf Course Maintenance Personnel and Equipment per day. There's no other way for them to get where they have to go. It's just that simple. They're gonna be crossing. There are approximately seventy privately owned golf carts that reside in homes at. A Wildflower residence and travel from the residence home to the golf course and return each day after each game is completed. That's necessary because Wildflower does not allow us to access the course from our homes. Even though I have a cart path beside my home to get there, I can't use it. So. It's, I guess the thing of it is, I mean, like I said, I understand, a- and really and truly, when you look at where the, the exits. From that new development, proposed development, where it located, it's conveniently located and strategically located close to Wildflower and Sunflower. They're not going to go down to Adams and use the stoplight. They're not gonna do that. To go downtown. They're gonna come straight through our community. It's just that simple. So I'm, I'm just asking you to think about it. If you were living there. If you were living there and you had children, no sidewalks, you have to walk your dogs or walk your kids or anything else or do anything. That's what you're facing. And look at the cars that are gonna be going through there every day, every day. That, I just say, think about it, folks. Just please think about it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin.
Now, that's a couple of things, but for the next speaker, is that legal? Um, I just want the public to know that uh, um, we've been working on some of these issues. And currently there is a traffic study going on on Wildflower. It just went up.
Yes, saw it today, saw it today.
Was it today? And uh, we need, we need that to figure out what the issues are now and, and we can kind of determine what some from. Just the knowledge that we have what might happen later with some of this. So that's going on. Um, the city manager is also actively seeking a proposal um from a consulting engineer to uh. Evaluate some potential traffic calming measures along, along the street over there. Um, it could be raised crosswalks. Um, one of my favorites is chicanes. That's kind of little, little bump outs that. Stick out and kind of make it a little bit winding that I think are aesthetically pleasing and, and uh. Get help. That's just one of my personal favorites. Um, or maybe more signing and pavement markings. Those are just some of the ideas, but it will be evaluated with the, by a professional engineer at some point. Um, and that, I think probably before this all happens, we should have that. Um, if we approve it. And uh, we also, I heard some concerns about truck traffic. We're also going to be put up some no tru, no through truck traffic signs. Um, over there to stop some of the truck traffic. Um, I mean, that's. There may be some trucks that slip through, but they, they'll be able to get tickets for it because their signs up and. Uh, definitely the construction traffic, you can curb that. I own a construction company. If they came to me and said, your trucks are going through here illegally, I. The construction company will stop to it. Um, so the construction traffic should be able to be mitigated. Going through there from this project as well as the Kegley Road project and any other projects. Um, so that should help a lot. Um, I just wanted to throw that out there. It's the. The current issues and what might be future issues are being addressed or, or worked on right now, so.
Well, if I could make one more comment, sir, and, and I, and I appreciate you giving me the time, but. Uh, just, just within the last few days, there was an accident somewhere exactly where I don't know. But people have figured out that Wildflower, especially Wildflower, is a definite cut through. And the other day there were cars lined up for, at the main entrance. At, at the stop sign, main entrance, all the way down to and past the Country Club Building, waiting to get out on, on the road. And that's without even counting this, you know what I'm saying? So it's already there. It's just gonna be to the point where we can't, we won't be able to live there hardly on, seriously.
And we realize the current issues, definitely, and, and I'm. I'm sure the new widened street has helped that because it's easier to get to that point from Adams at least and get through and. Um, Google Maps and people are, that type of things are out and three people through there that we didn't have a few years ago, so. We realize the issues and even whether this goes through or not, we are working, doing our best to try to. Address those issues. Um, but we don't wanna just go throw some things out there without some study, so that's, that's why you're seeing the traffic study and the. Um, consulting engineer being pulled in to that.
Appreciate any help you give, so, okay, thank you.
Sharon, Wilson, would you mind come up and speak? We, um, this is where the audio would be recorded versus then just speaking from the audience. Thank you.
I'm Sharon Wilson. I live at Wildflower. Did I understand that the study is gonna be done ahead of your approving of this?
Study is uh being done.
On the, on the streets there, because it is really a major problem. Even now, I live uh. Off of Sunflower and to get on Kegley at certain times of the day, it really does get busy and crowded. And so. I'm just seeing a lot more traffic and some sort of. Reasonable study needs to be done, and as far as Kegley being finished when it's supposed to be finished. The little part we have was not finished nearly on time, so that presents another problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also know that, that the um, Kegley Road to, to finish Kegley Road out all the way over to, to the midway area. Um, that is bidding on the twenty-third. I mean, it, that's. I've seen the plans. It is bidding and, and will be moving forward. Um, I think we're probably projected to approve it in May, the, to approve a contractor.
We plan to take it uh to council for consideration, the second meeting in May, and then the um. The anticipated construction timeframe is June of this year through September of next year. And then just uh to address um, the uh questions specifically related to the traffic study. The um staff performed traffic study that's ongoing right now. Um, should wrap up next week and then be evaluated by the staff team. That will help us determine if there's any immediate um measures that we might be able to put in place. Maybe um things like enhanced enforcement or traffic uh feedback signs. Uh, bringing in the consulting engineer will take a little bit more, that, that work will take a little bit more time to. Study what options um that are more construction driven. If we're gonna do any type of modifications to the roadway, that'll take a little bit more time. And I wouldn't anticipate that to be completed prior necessary to the, to the approval of the zoning. But it certainly can be underway prior to then.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Anyone else?
Hello, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Patty Phillips. My husband Jimmy and I live at Wildfire Country Club at thirteen twenty Daisy Lane. Uh, seven six five oh two. We've been residents there for twenty-six years. I am speaking today to you, Mayor and the Commissioners, because of our growing concern. Of adding construction on the west side of Kegley Road to develop a home division of three hundred homes. We are not saying or implying that this or any other planned development should not happen. We are saying that our desire is to ask for careful consideration of approving or not approving. When Kegley Road is not even finished. The last phase began at the location Wildfire duplexes, Kegley Road. To end approximately at the railroad track, Kegley Road. Construction isn't inevitable, we are well aware. But my question to you Commissioners, to what advantage? When the roads are not ready for the continued massive increase of motorists, it will. And undeniably bring to those of us who live here at Wildflower. I have done some homework on some figures that might interest you. I bring this up because it has been said, we are in dire, dire need of living arrangements for these. Thousands of people are coming to Temple. On apartments concerning the geographic locations along the twenty-three oh five or West Adams Corridor. Stopping at three seventeen Highway, West Adams. There are nine existing apartment complexes, three new apartment complexes under construction. One that I don't know, I guess it's the townhomes. I don't know. It has not been told how many um units that will be. I don't know that. But the rental number for the new apartments, the new under construction are six hundred and fifty-three. Units with the fourth one unknown to me at this time. The um nine existing apartments along that Adams and our uh twenty-three oh five corridor. Is um, a hundred and thirty units are available for rental right now. That's, that's in all the nine existing apartments. So the total of twelve complexes. Is the equi, equivalent of two thousand nine hundred and twenty-three people can find a place to live. Just in apartments, just in apartments right now. Now, for the available homes for sale, not rental, along that, that area of twenty-three oh five corridor. You know, of course it goes off a little bit to the side, or a hundred and eighty-nine homes as of this date today. And of course, the availability fluctuates as we get closer to summer. So I believe the numbers reflected there is not a sh, sh, there is not a shortage of possibilities in ownership or rental. So this now brings me to the issue that affects our Wildflower Country Club neighborhood, traffic. We are aware that traffic is not your concern, but for us, it greatly affects our quality of life and safety. Today, as you weigh what I and others have said, I respectfully hope you will consider. That the best thing for all at this time is to hold off on any new construction till Kegley Road. Is completely finished. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Anyone else?
Afternoon, Captain. I'm Jim Vaughn. I live out at uh Wildflower. Been here for a number of years. Um, and I think the points that uh, that Ken and Patty have talked about are, are very assailant to this whole conversation. You know, there's so much planning and conversation about the west side of Kegley. But there's nothing on the, on the east side of Kegley. You know, we have two existing streets there. Which can be compounded with traffic for a number of reasons, which I'm sure y'all can agree. And even more so the next couple of years while Kegley is being completed, they're gonna come up and, and apply a flower. Um, you know, uh, at one point in time, y'all had in the uh, in the master plan, a connection from uh. From Howard, not Howard, Hogan Road up to the service road by the interstate. That's what we need. That's what we need like today to work on to accommodate what's coming. And I see this kind of disappeared on the, on the plan. I don't understand why. I'm sure y'all are aware of and all the traffic counts and so on and so forth are hypothetical in some sense. But if you come out to Wildflower and look at the traffic going and coming through there, I think you'll see that. There is a problem needs to be addressed sooner than, than later, because it's like anything else. If you allow it once, then it will continue to happen. I personally, I think representing the uh, uh, my particular position here. Is who is the builder of the property in question here? Is there a name or corporation or whatever? We keep referring to the property, but who's the builder?
There's current landowner, but. Landowner seeking zoning, anybody could come in and buy that. I mean, he could tell us, but he doesn't have to.
I understand that.
Just zoning, he doesn't have to follow it.
I understand that. But uh, the question uh comes up because I understand the square footage for uh. S F one is seventy-five hundred square feet. That's not a very big lot, quite frankly. Uh, the homes that are being built on the east side of the inter, of the uh, three, uh, three seventeen right now, that big development. Which is part of the Western Hills Complex, those lots are larger than seventy-five hundred feet, I believe. And those for the most part, from what I understand, are built in a carpet mode, which many homes appear to be. Are being built today to lease, not to sell. So we get back to rooftops and these homes that you're talking about, three hundred. Do we know if they're a for sale or a for lease basis? That impacts it quite a bit, because if you go over to uh, uh, Oldie Drive, um. Uh, over in, in Woodbridge, in Woodbridge and look through there. You know, some homes are over there. There's five or six, seven cars parked in the driveway on the street. So you can extrapolate from there, the concern that we have with not planning forward. And accommodating some of our concerns, not only our concerns, but additional traffic concerns. All these people. Want to be able to access this, that and the other. But you need to meet their requirements, certainly, but also there needs to be a little of a. Addressment, better addressing, I think, to Wildflower. You know, we're trying to be good stewards of our community. Uh, Wildflower's been there a long time. A lot of good folks and, and there will continue to be over the years, as any development. But when they're somewhat blindsided about all the planning concern on the west side of Kegley. With very little consideration how to accommodate some of the uh possible problems and congestion on the east side. We feel like we're being kind of left out of the uh, left out of the conversation somewhat. Even though we can first hear, we're not sure how much consideration P N Z and City Council has really put into it. And I'm not adverse to development, but I am good to, I am aware of. The planning to accommodate the development, the development that comes in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
I will say, um, you can't legislate good taste, but I know in discussions that I've been in with the. With the owners and, and uh engineers and such. Um, their desire is to have homes over there very much similar to what's currently in Wildflower. That's their desire. Um, is what they're stating, and they're, they're here and can speak to that too, but. Like, like I said, you can't, you can't legislate taste, but I know what their desires are, so. You're fixing to find out, so.
Hello, there, I'm Ruben Mark. Afternoon, Mayor, Councilman. I'm Ruben Mark. I live at thirty-nine oh eight South Paverage Road in Temple. I'm the real estate person representing the developer. The developer is outfit called Pearl Grounding. His name is Jeff Lang. He's a local guy. His main company is Peerless Enterprises. He's a contractor. He's bought lots of property here in Temple. I've sold him lots of stuff, so he's a local guy. That's who the local guy is building this.
Mr. Mark, Mr. Mark, Mr. Mark, please address the council and anyone in the audience. Please leave, please let Mr. Mark speak without, this isn't question and answer for Mr. Mark.
Okay, as I say, I'm the real estate person representing that developer account, which is Jeff Ling. He's a local guy. Uh, I've lived in Temple for forty-three years. I've seen numerous changes in West Temple. Texas has grown by four hundred and seventy-seven thousand people last year, and a good share of those people are coming to Temple, as you, as you well know. H U B owns thirty-one acres land at the corner of thirty-four, I mean, Adams and Kegley, which is about a half a mile from this project. I understand they're waiting on the amount of rooftops to be the correct amount of rooftops before they develop that property. Which I'm glad that would happen. The Temple Economic Development people are doing a great job at attracting new people to Temple. The, the new companies look for several things before they come to town. They're looking for schools, hospitals, workforce, the availability of work of homes for sale and places to build homes. Understand the Kegley Road contract will be completed ballpark twenty-four months. That's about the time this project will be completed before they can start selling homes, or selling lots. But also when it's completed, it's not gonna fill up immediately. It's partly a five-year project for all this thing is full. So the home, the spots will be there for them to buy, but it's not that. We approve this now, it's not gonna have three hundred homes immediately. We're talking five years. By that time, Kegley Road will be complete. You know, I don't know what else to say about that. Uh, developer is also gonna donate four acres of this land to the city for a new park there on Kegley Road. So there'll be a new park there on Kegley Road, which will join property that the city already owns, to make a nice park area there. The problem that I see, if I lived in Wildflower, I wouldn't like all those cars driving through the audition all the time either. But the problem is it's a public road. The public's gonna drive on these roads. The way to fix that problem's easy. Make Wild. The way to fix that problem's easy. Make Wildflower a gated community, but private roads, then only residents and invited guests would drive on those roads. This development's a great deal for the city. We have a developer willing to spend the time and the money to develop this project. I'm asking the City Council to approve this project. It's been approved by the Planning and Zoning Committee. And I thank you much.
Anyone else?
My name's John Morrison. I'm also a resident of Wildflower, been a realtor in town for over twenty-four years and very familiar with the situation. And I'm not here to beat a dead horse. I'm also for progress and things of this nature, but I do know from experience, right now, I live on the same side of Wildflower Lane as Jim does and as as well as Patty. And there have already been instances where I can't even leave my house, especially around the five o'clock mark. And that's not good, and that's before this is done and without Kegley being addressed. And to Ken's point, it's not only just thirty feet, it's less than that. There are empty lots where construction's gonna take place. There's already remodeling that's done on a regular basis on that main artery. And you've got construction workers' cars and all of that parked on that, so you're talking basically fifteen feet. You move up to the the country club, not only do you have private carts and country club, uh, Wildflower carts going across for golf, but you also have tennis courts and some other things right there where golf, where tennis balls are flying across the road and people are having and so all of that needs to be recognized, and I can appreciate signage. The authorities sitting there monitoring that on a daily basis, that's not gonna stop the issue. So I just wanted to bring some of those things to your attention, because they are a real problem. And we've got walkers with kiddos, we've got walkers with dogs already on a very narrow road that have trouble manipulating that, like I said, routine instances where it's bumper to bumper traffic from the loop to Kegley. And what's gonna end up happening with this, if you don't have these other things addressed, is it's gonna be an eclipse moment every day for us. And we don't want that. We're not opposed to progress, like they've said. And the gated issue has has been mentioned to us before, but we're always told, well, how are the golfers that are not residents gonna get there if it's gated? These are questions I don't have answers to. All I do know is I'm a resident there and it's a problem already, and I just want you to understand it's gonna get worse. Thank you for your time.
I wanted to address, John, you mentioned the signage alone won't do it, but the the consulting study or the consultant and consulting engineer that we get, if it warrants it, it'll likely be more than just signage, so. Yeah, we we recognize there's a problem there now.
Anybody else? Anybody before Mr. Vaughn? So Mr. Vaughn, the last one?
I'm not gonna repeat everything that the others have said. You've heard it. And I know as councilperson that you're concerned about your particular area, because you've got the constituents. I hope you just don't lose sight that we are concerned about it. And what they said is honest truth. I live on Wildflower, and on top of that, my wife just turned ninety yesterday, and I'm far behind, so we're not even gonna be around one. But it is an important area, and one of the things that hasn't been said is busloads come in for high school, cross-country, golf things. There's just people there all the time, and it doesn't make sense. And my only question for you is, is it really true that they're gonna complete Kegley? I mean, it's been seven years, and the last one took what was it, about a year and a half? Nineteen months. It just doesn't make make sense, and all we're saying is get Kegley done before you do anything else. Thank you.
All right, anybody before Mr. Vaughn wraps this up? Is there anybody on virtual platform? You're up?
Well, we all appreciate your time and effort on the project. What I see as being something that needs to be in the preparation, the planning mill now, is the connection from Kegley to the service road. That's gonna solve a lot of the problems, because even when Kegley is completed, you still have all these other things happening. And from the other side, further west of this development right here, there are hundreds of acres to be developed. And once you get to Old Waco Road, there are hundreds and hundreds of rooftops there. So Hogan Road, if extended, is gonna come right down in the face of the Kegley, and hopefully by that time, we'll have a remediation for the traffic being able to cross Kegley and go onto the service road. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm sorry, we didn't fix Kegley Road ten years ago when we talked about it. Okay, that is a, I would, I would venture to say that is the most expensive road per mile that there is in all of Temple, and that might include I thirty-five. But the reason why that road has not been fixed over all these years is because it was just simply so expensive. Okay, so short-sightedness maybe, but either way, it was prior councils trying to be careful with taxpayer dollars. And there was a time, probably two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, when there was serious consideration about just shutting it down. Rip it up, shut it down, and being done with Kegley and leaving Wildflower with basically two roads in, two roads out, but really only, you know, one exit onto the loop per road. We decided not to do that, and that's when we got very serious about repairing Kegley. But we repaired it correctly, and it takes a while. It takes a lot of money, and it takes a lot of time. And as Mike said, that road's gonna let here in about three or four months, weeks, and it'll be built. And it's not all the city of temples issue with how long it takes, because you've got AT&T fiber there. You've got a lot of other entities that are sitting there in that, that are sitting there in that right of way. So these things take time, and they take a lot of money. And we are growing. We are the, and we've all said here, we were the based on percentage of population increase, we were the twentieth fastest-growing city in the United States, not in Texas, in the United States. And for us to be good stewards of those tax dollars, keep tax rates where they're affordable, and I know, and I know that your rates haven't gone up, I know your tax bill has in many instances. So is in an effort to be good stewards with all of that, these type of things take a while. You live on a, you live in a country club area that has narrow roads, which was probably wonderful twenty-five years ago. It probably felt like a nice, close-knit community. Well, we're not just this little spot on the road anymore, right? We are, we are a true growing municipality, moving very quickly to to toward our organization. What I'm thankful for is that this this proposal isn't a bunch of apartment complexes, what nine apartment complexes going up? That brings a that's different than a home sitting on seventy-five hundred square foot lot. So you're gonna get a different neighbor there. So these are all, everything that's been brought up is absolutely legitimate, absolutely important. But so is the building of homes for people to live in as Temple continues to grow, because that is not slowing down. Anyone that owns real estate has seen their appraisal go up, and and those numbers are real, because it reflects it reflects the demand in many cases for your homes. So like I said, one thing this council acknowledges and that we are very concerned about and focused on is keeping this place as much as a hometown feel as we can, but realizing that they're coming. They're not, and it's not like we can say no, sorry, Temple's closed for business. These people are going to show up. And there's no, there's no doubting it, and we, it's our job as council members to be good stewards of not only money, but also the development that goes on. I realize that everybody agrees with maybe particular decisions that are made, but we are always very conscious and conscientious about where and what ends up being approved in the city of Temple. Because we're talking about homes, your homes, I don't know, were built in the eighties. I live, I live in a home that was built in nineteen oh nine. The homes that are gonna be built across Kegley are gonna stand there for fifty years, and none of us doubt that. None of us take these decisions flippantly. So just please understand that we are aware of the impact that these types of developments have on not only just the city of Temple in general, but also the people that live in close proximity. So whatever ends up being approved here, please don't think that anything that's been said here, any concerns fall on deaf ears, because they don't. But we do have the whole city that we are charged with moving forward in a good, sustainable, economically viable way.
Mayor, I'd like to address enough. Probably shouldn't ask a question without knowing the answer, but I believe before we're before we decided to bid this project, the Kegley Road project, the dry utilities and franchise utilities are out of the way correct. Where have they been? I mean, I, I am ninety-nine percent sure they are, and I'm getting a nod of yes from our planning, I mean, our public works engineer back there, so. When the, when the project bids and we award it, that contractor, when he gets to start time, he'll be set to a timeframe, and if he doesn't complete it in timeframe, he'll be charged, what's called liquidated damages, he'll be money will be taking, taken out of his final payments for not completing on time, so. That's not a promise that they'll complete it on time, it's a promise they're gonna, the contractors are gonna do their best, I promise you, because they don't wanna get money taken away from them.
Okay, very good. Council, any other questions for Mr. Chandler? Nothing?
Mayor, can I just add one thing? A great questions that came up from the neighbors, and especially Mr. Vaughn's comment about Hogan and having a connection, additional connection to the loop. Mr. Deckman and I would would like to reevaluate the Hogan alignment and research, because I know that that was, that was taken off of the previous thoroughfare plan, and that, there was a lot of input as part of that. But with that additional information, and certainly a lot has changed in three years, for us to evaluate that alignment and the potential to have a future connection to the loop that is not Wildflower. And so we would, we'd like to be able to evaluate that, and if it's warranted, then of course that would come forward with with a future round of thoroughfare plan amendments, but we'd like to just take a look at that. Thank you for the input.
Yes, very good.
It's, it's still shown on our thoroughfare plan map on
Oh, okay, didn't show up on our slides. That's great.
Yeah, I think if you look closely on the slide, you can see it, it's a dash line, but when you go to the full map, it still shows a future connection all the way to the loop.
Thank you for clarifying that. I was, I was wondering, what happened to that?
It didn't go away.
But we will, either way, further evaluate it based on new information to see, is that, is that the best way to get to the loop in the future? And from a feasibility perspective?
Valuated in terms of timing with relationship to Kegley being developed or completed and this project, if it were to be approved?
And I think probably another thing that we should consider is the next time that there's a call for projects through Colleen Temple Metropolitan Planning Organization to consider whether that would be an appropriate project to submit, given that it does connect to the text dot roadway and would have some pretty, in my opinion, regional significance that may qualify it for some funding. So I, that's what I would recommend we at least consider.
Good.
Jason, that's in your head?
Thanks, Jason.
Great.
Very good. Again, very much appreciated all the input here. This is, this is why we have these, so thank y'all for being here.
I also wanted to note that the, like, as Mr. Chandler said earlier, I've, I've personally been involved in so several others and and some of the folks from Wildflower Neighborhood. This was not the original concept that the landowner, developer, the people came forward with, so. They have, they have backed off and worked with staff and, and like I said, even some of the Wildflower residents to come up with what's here now. So it's not like they were just allowed, if we pass this, it's not like they were just allowed to do everything that they ever wanted, because this was not the original.
Okay, very good. Then with that, I will close the public, can't still nobody, nobody on the virtual platform? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, if there's no further questions for Mr. Chandler and Mr. Deckman, holler and take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. We have a second by Councilmember Grant. Counsel, please cast your vote. Item eight passes five votes to zero. Moving on to item nine is a first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance approving a rezoning request from Ag to General Retail on fifteen plus or minus acres, part of a tract known as Bell County Tax Appraisal District Identification Number five-one-four-nine-eight in the PM Mercer Survey Abstract five-five-three and addressed as six-nine-four-four Airport Road. Mr. Chandler?
All right, thank you, Mayor. So the fifteen acre rezoning, you can see it's on the northeast side of Airport Road. And so this is to accommodate a gas station, so the fifteen acres would would eventually result in additional development, but the gas station is the driver for this project. And of course, with alcohol sales, as most gas stations do offer that, and the applicant intends to offer that, would be subject to distance requirements from, in particular, the school across the street, Priority Charter School subdivision plat would certainly be required prior to development. And so here, here's the property, and really, at the bottom right-hand corner, you can see the proximity to fire station number eight, and then bottom left-hand corner, you can see Priority Charter School. And this is just looking at a private drive facing the northeast, and then also looking south towards Lightner Lane. And so this area is identified in the comprehensive plan as employment mixed use, which would include a mix of different uses, certainly a gas station is an appropriate part of that mix. And the DRC Development Review Committee reviewed this on March fourth, but also specifically the fire chief was engaged and and the airport director, because of proximity to the fire station and the airport, and no issues were identified other than the fact that the sign, we're already limited in terms of the sign height, but the sign certainly couldn't exceed FAA regulations. So looking at the thoroughfare and Trails Master Plan Airport is a major arterial and a sidewalk would be required. And so looking at current and estimated traffic, just looking at the graphic or the map on the right, you can see traffic counts at research or the outer loop and airport of twenty-one thousand three hundred and fifty-nine. Those counts do decrease as you go north along the airport, but closest to this location, a to this location, a daily traffic count of fifteen thousand nine hundred and eleven. Uh, with airport as a constructed major arterial, uh, it can accommodate, you know, up to four, forty thousand daily trips and it still be, uh, functional. Current volume, of course, between the fourteen thousand and pointing one thousand, depending on the intersection. A convenience store with nine fuel positions, which is what is proposed, would generate twenty-three hundred and eighty-six. Uh, of course, we don't know about what other future retail is planned. Um, general retail will allow most retail uses. And then also looking at the school traffic, AM peak hour, the school estimates ninety-four to one hundred and eighteen trips. Uh, and then up to three hundred and ten daily weekday rates, figures provided by the school. And so water and sewer, uh, there's a twenty-four inch water line along airport. Wastewater is provided by ten and eight-inch lines and a three-inch, uh, pressurized horse main, which you can see on the map. And so in, in terms of the, uh, distance requirement that referenced before for alcohol sales, off-premise consumption beer and wine, that would be provided by a gas station convenience store. Uh, it's a three hundred foot measurement property line to property line from charge school location, which, which would push the gas station to essentially the southern corner of the property when it is platted. And so if it were to be a package school, that would require a conditional requirement. That is not what they're requesting. And here you can see just the, the distance and where that three hundred foot buffer, um, would be provided and, and how that gas station would be positioned, uh, on the bottom corner to be compliant with that three hundred foot requirement. So looking at our comprehensive plan and the overall compliance, uh, staff has interpreted that it meets all of the, uh, thoroughfare plan, future land use, mobility, parks and trails master plan, uh, utility availability requirements. And so five notices were sent out to property owners within two hundred feet, and we had not received one that's been returned. The notice was printed in the newspaper on March seventh. And at the March eighteenth meeting for Planning and planning commission, they voted six to zero to recommend approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Counsel, anything for Mr. Chandler for our open public hearing? Nope. Item nine is subject to a public hearing. We ask you to step to the podium, state your name and address of the record if you have any comments or questions, or raise your hand on the virtual platform. Nobody? Nobody in the audience? All right, I will, um, close the public hearing, and counsel, if there's no questions for Mr. Chandler, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'm going to approve item nine as presented.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by, uh, Councilmember Pilkington. We have a second by Councilmember Grant. Counsel, please cast your vote. Item nine passes five votes to zero. Item ten is the first reading of a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance updating the city of Temple's drought contingency plan. Mr. Moffett?
Mayor, counsel, appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. Uh, we're gonna combine the next two in one presentation in the interest of time. Uh, we'll be updating, uh, we talked about.
Okay, if we're gonna do that, I'm gonna read it in. Um, so item ten, I just read. Item eleven is the first reading of a public hearing to consider adopting the ordinance update, updating the city of Temple's water conservation plan. Now we're ready.
Sorry about that.
Nope, that's all right.
All right, so, um, these two plans that are required to be updated by the state of Texas every five years. Um, you don't have to wait for five years to update them. In fact, uh, last, uh, five-year time period, we opened it up and then it was made some changes. Uh, but it is required to bring before you every five years by state. There's not any, uh, huge changes that we're proposing with this, um. But, um, the, just to give you a background of what the, these plans are intended for, water conservation plan really is the final goal is to conserve water, essentially what it is. Talks about the things you're gonna do to make that happen, um, extend the life of your current supplies and report your use and things like that. The drought contingency plan talks about what you do if there's a water shortage, which we've unfortunately experienced, we're currently in, as a matter of fact. Um, and it tells the public what we're gonna do in the case of a water shortage. In this update, um, we're largely updating, um, data. Um, that's a huge portion of it, any small grammatical corrections as well. Um, one of the, one of the, um, one of the exhibits had a, the, um, the edited version has all the updated data. Some of that data didn't transfer over to the final version, but that'll be corrected with second reading, and that's just, um, that's just, uh, something to clean up there. So I want to give you all a heads up about that in the interest of transparency, transparency. Um, what's been added is inclusion of social media as an outreach method, um, we're bringing up to date there. Um, that's for both of these plans. The drought contingency plan, um, we add some clarification that if, uh, something, someone's using reused water, there isn't for the restrictions because we want to encourage reuse, especially in drought. Um, added a, um, added a clause of the, the, um, barenesses to the plan to be requested in advance. And then we changed it so that the previous plan said within five days of the shortage declaration, you had to make a request. Well, that's kind of challenging for a lot of folks to do, so we changed it to say you need to request it fourteen days in advance, just so there's more flexibility there. Gives people better opportunity. And then our conservation plan, we changed it from their language, and then it said we walked all the twelve drainings in a year, but now we monitor those leaks through SCADA. In fact, when we are SCADA, it lets us know something's wrong, tank's not feeling right, we run out to the field and find the leak. So that's kind of how we do it now. And then most of the lines are in areas where people notice calls anyways. Uh, back in the day, they went or went through lots of fields and things like that, so it was more important, so we just adjusted that as well. That's, uh, that's it. Any questions in this discussion?
Counsel, anything for Mr. Moffett?
All right, I will open the, um, public hearing on items ten and eleven together. If anyone would like to speak on those, if you step to the podium or raise your hand. Okay? Then I will close the public hearing on items, uh, ten and eleven, and counsel, I will entertain a motion on item ten.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve item ten as presented by Mr. Moffett.
We have a motion by Councilmember Long. We have a second by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. Counsel, please cast your vote. Item ten passes five votes to zero. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion on item eleven.
Mayor, I'll make a motion also on item eleven to, um, approve item eleven as presented by Mr. Moffett.
We have a motion by Councilmember Long, second by, um, Mayor Pro Tim Walker. Counsel, please cast your vote. Item eleven passes five votes to zero. Item twelve reads, uh, it's first reading of a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing an amendment and adopting the tax increment financing reinvestment zone number one, financing and project plans to align with master plan, which included adjusting public improvements for years, uh, fiscal, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-four through fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Mr. Bernard?
Amendment was re, recommended by, presented and recommended and approved by the reinvestment zone board on, uh, their March twenty-seventh meeting. Uh, the, essentially the amendment is, goes in, we look through review of projects and review of completed projects. We were able to scrape some, or sweep money that was left over in those line items and come up with, uh, total funding to be reallocated of little less than two point five million dollars. And then the project committee had reviewed projects with the finance committee and identified some projects that needed some additional money or new projects. And one of those, the allocation of two hundred and fifty thousand for professional fees for due diligence, um, change in, or a small amount for right-of-way on the Pepper Creek Truck Sewer along Kegley Road. Uh, uh, updated OPC for the South, uh, Temple Transmit, Mission Line C of seven hundred and fifteen thousand. And then expanded scope and estimate for Synergy Park wastewater line of one, little less than one point three million and then some additional grant match dollars for, uh, project at the airport of little over a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. And then also, uh, as mentioned, we, uh, adbarred some money from the outer loop phase six right-of-way for twenty twenty-four and replenishing that in twenty twenty-six. Then finally, uh, on the project and the financing plan, old hired road drainage and waterline improvements were, um, funded in FY twenty-four, and that project's not quite ready to, it's still under design. I think it's thirty percent design. Um, and Lorraine Drive was funded in twenty twenty-five. It's a hundred percent designed, and they wanted to swap the funding so they could go ahead and uh, bid Lorraine Drive and begin construction in FY twenty twenty-four, and then would replenish that in twenty twenty-five. Uh, when your agenda attacked, she did have the financing plan. Summary financing plan, retail project plan, and then the master plan, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard. Counsel, anything? Item is subject to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Um, all right, very good. Then I will, uh, I'll close the public hearing on item twelve, and counsel, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion by Councilmember Pilkington. We have a second by Councilmember Grant. Counsel, please cast your vote. Item twelve passes five votes to zero. Uh, current time is six forty-five. I want to thank you all for attending, and, uh, this meeting is adjourned.